I reminded so much of this. I'm careful.
They don't want to stand in the way.
That's good.
I'll call the meeting to order. We'll have the pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the roll call, please.
Mr. Huffman. Mr. Shaker.
Here.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Ms. Stampa.
Here.
Okay, do we have anything to add or delete from the agenda? Then we will follow our agenda that's been distributed to us. And we have the minutes from August 16th. Any additions or corrections to this set of minutes? Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have time for general citizen comments. Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith, 129 Bixers Ferry Road. You guys might get sick of me eventually. So with everything, I know you guys are discussing things, so I want to try to throw as much information out as possible. After attending the last planning commission meeting, Barbie had brought up some other additional things to look into and consider. When it comes to the bus on Main Street, I did speak with Page County Public Schools Transportation, and the email they confirmed that the children will not be crossing Main Street. They will go the correct directions, that they enter and exit directly in front of the location. To confirm, parking is going to be at the New Direction Community Church. I had submitted that prior. We're still in the process of getting it signed and notarized, because it does require that notarized for the lease for it. But I do have in email writing confirming for our staff use for any purpose, to use their parking lot. And it is, I have mapped it a million different ways. If you go crosswalk to crosswalk, front door to back door to crosswalk, it is within that required designated 1,200 feet, no matter how way you walk it. And that will be available. I've also mapped out if we parked different ways. It can fit 25 to 35 parking or vehicles that into that lot. And then to address, I do have the breakdown of, in the document I submitted, with the breakdown of staff and kids per hour estimated, as well as the number of cars estimated for both parking and driving through. When we did a dry run-through, a bunch of parents and staff doing run-through, we estimate at most probably 10 cars in a 30-minute period. We never had more than three cars backed up at a time due to the amount it takes, even if we had the kids going through. Bring the tantrum, the parents who, hey, forgot the wipes, you forgot this. Oh, wait, my child needs this. Wait, I forgot to tell you this. We planned out all those scenarios and timed every single run. And then the other thing I want to address is the number of kids. Again, the state regulations for childcare centers has it with a square footage at, I think, 110. Building inspector got us just over 200. And then we were requesting 75. And again, 75 is the max capacity. Due to us being a center that also does drop-in, we leave room in that for getting up to the 75 if all drop-in spots were utilized at the peak hours of the day. So there's going to be majority of the day, majority of the times, that we're not even going to be at that 75. And when we're starting out, right when we open, we're not going to be starting out with 75 either. We're going to be starting out with maybe 25 to 30 kids, and then building enrollment from there. We had significantly more people that were planning on utilizing us with the pushback of everything. The need is still there, but people are just kind of waiting here at this point. And a lot of people are kind of just waiting for this, so we don't know exactly, we're not going to have that same initial starting number. And then I'm still hoping, and I've requested a joint planning commission and town council meeting to vote on it and agree on it, because I feel like that makes the most sense to me. It's not going to be recommended tonight. I think that it is beneficial for having all the parties involved when it is something that I've already brought to the table, and all it is is additional information, and having the opportunity to answer questions. Everyone who has questions and concerns would allow that to happen. I also included in this document our emergency plan, that that had been brought up, and I had initially said I was going to send it to you guys, and had to tweak a few things with the fire marshal, so I did include it here. And then I guess I just had the blanket, does anyone have anything they would like me to answer or address?
We have copies of all of the information that you presented.
Thank you.
The emergency plan is part of your packet that has to go to DOE, right?
Mm-hmm.
For licensure?
Yep. And I did include a little bit additional information to kind of address some of those situations that you may have with children with special needs, kind of piggybacking off of some of the experiences I had last school year in the schools with kids who did not want to move when the alarm went off, just sitting right there or not. So kind of, how do you, as a teacher in a room, have a child that all of a sudden doesn't want to go? What do you do in that situation? And I kind of touched a little bit on that with kind of the process of, okay, you do your part. If they won't move, you call the next person up to kind of step in, so that you can still get everyone else out safely while addresses the child who's struggling a little bit.
I appreciate all the extra that you did.
Of course.
Any other questions this time? We'll come back to this at some point, of course.
Sounds good. Are you frightened? Do the questions pop up?
We don't have anyone else that's signed up to speak, but we're glad.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Sheffield. I have bad allergies, so bear with my voice. I'm actually, I have two homes. I have one in Page and one in Elton.
What's your address, please?
I 516 Denver Avenue, Shenandoah, Virginia. My little girl, Alenia, went to Luray Elementary. She's been there since she's been three years old. The reason why we kept her in Luray and not sending her to Shenandoah School was because of the people they had in the school system. Throughout the years, it got really bad. And she has, she has level two autism. She's a great child. The last couple of years, I have filed so many suits against Luray. Well, sorry, not suits, but what do you call, Jenna? I can't think of the name of it. Anyway, I can't think of the name of it right now. I just want to blank, so I'm a little bit nervous. We have filed a lot of things against Virginia Department of Education, and it's been complaints. We've filed a lot of complaints, and it's become in my favor. I still have several of them now that we're actually in the process of, which Monday starts mediation, because I have denied their request. I, at one time, wanted my little girl to be with Jenna, because Jenna was actually a special ed teacher in Luray last year. A lot of things got brought to me, how they was doing my little girl. And my little girl, I mean, she's eight years old. She's beautiful. We travel the world together. Luray wanted to put her in a sentry room. Well, actually, they was proved to put her in a sentry room by herself, and I proved all that, and I'd be happy to share all that with you. I think this center would be great for the kids in this area. There's nothing to hear, guys. There's nothing. I'm fortunate. I own two homes. I'm blessed. I got my kid out of Luray this year. She's now in Rockingham County Public School, and she's excelling. I mean, she's excelling. She's doing great. Does she have loopholes? Yes. Yes, she does. But, we're getting through them. You know, so I support Jenna all the way in this, and I'm willing to help her any way I can, you know, to stand up for her. Because I do think there's things, you know, with the fire marshal and stuff like that, she's addressed. But I mean, any way that I can, you know, help you guys, the need is severely in Luray right now for kids like my little girl, these guys. You know, I mean, just give her a chance. Give her a chance. And let us help her. Let parents like, you know, with me, help her. Because I mean, I will be there all I can, and everybody else will be, you know, to support her. Because right now, in the Page County system, they can't handle kids like Alenia. And it's sad. It really actually breaks my heart, because she can. While she was in school this year with my child, now mind you, my child was not with her. She heard teachers talk about me, teachers talk about my child, teacher getting award for being beat up by a special ed child. You know how devastating that is for a parent? You know, or for a grandparent, a custody little girl? Do you know how devastating that is? Knowing that I have spent, like, every waking moment of my life to make sure this child gets everything she needs in life. I mean, we travel, we are front row of live concerts, guys. If I would have listened to Luray, my child would have had headphones on, a device put in her hand, is what they wanted for her. Do you know what she does now? She's talking full sentences. She's reading over 100-plus sight words with the help of a reading specialist. We just got back from vacation. She's out playing with other kids, which a year ago, I wouldn't even walk across the street, because I was scared of, what if she would hit another child? I got called every day from work, which is our way, I work at Lakeside Classics, and our way to get here to pick her up from the school, because of the school. She was doing this, she was doing that. They called CPS on me, which, by the way, was dismissed immediately, immediately. But I just want to let you guys know, you know, this is a huge opportunity for Luray, huge opportunity for kids in Page County, because what is going to happen to these kids without this? And that's all I have to say. Just please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Okay, we don't have any matters for public hearing this evening, but we do have the information that Jenna was just sharing with us for the Every Child Learning Center at 201 East Main Street. Any other discussion or questions for Jenna on all of the parking info and staffing and emergency plan?
No questions for Jenna, but I have one for Steve. So now, what's next? Will it go to another public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next, next month?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
October 11th? Yes, sir. Okay. Other questions or discussion?
Is there, is there anything? And I apologize, I was not at the meeting when this was voted on to be sent to the council. That's the one I missed. But was there, was there any, any concerns that the council had at their meeting when they voted to deny the special use permit that have not been addressed in what she provided us tonight? I remember parking.
What parking?
I remember the road. I think there was discussion about the road. I don't remember the discussion about the emergency plan, but that's part of licensure. And was there, was there anything else that they talked about that?
I watched, I watched the video of the town council meeting.
Yeah, I did too. I'm just trying to remember it.
Parking, but I don't, that was even addressed, though, at that time, I thought, because I thought.
It was not.
Okay. Because I thought there was a letter already from.
There was.
They did, the code requires a full lease.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, got it.
And I think I remember some of them being said about line of sight when you're pulling out of DeFord, like, from the funeral home. But when I read through this Monday, it looks like your, your loop is going down DeFord through the alley and coming out Williams, because there's photographs in here of looking either way, coming out of Williams.
And it is, as she has in here, it is a whole lot easier to see.
On Williams than it is coming out of DeFord.
Yes. Yeah.
Which is why they always direct traffic when there's funerals.
Yes.
And then there was a question about the, the town not maintaining the road in their meeting, too. That's, that's been addressed, right?
Yeah. Who's going to be maintaining that lawn and?
Right. So it's not a burden. It's not a burden for the town. That's been, that's been addressed.
I'll do it.
I will ask also, because Jenna did request, and I can't remember if we've done it before, where we had a joint meeting, the planning commission and the town council. Is that?
Because I'm in, because the business is in the angel cry zone, I can request that. I've already emailed the mayor and requested it, but I am not getting any responses from him, so I'm not sure what else to do to request that. Because I've seen everything, both party, both groups have, I don't know why it wouldn't be an idea to do that.
We have received the request. And I think probably that direction would need to come from the council. Yes, sir. Yeah. I don't, I don't think that's something that we can set up.
And I wasn't able to watch the meeting on Monday. Was that brought up?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate for you to contact the mayor and just let him know that if he chooses to have a joint meeting, that you would be, that we would be agreeable?
If that's.
If that's his choice to do?
So how would that work? It seems like once before, a long time ago, we had one for something, but I think that was more for informational purposes. Because we, we vote to recommend to the council, right? And then, and then the council then decides on it. So would that?
The council doesn't have another public hearing, though, right? Do they have another public hearing before they vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, so that's hard to do. In a joint meeting.
Yeah.
Because we can't vote to recommend until we have a public hearing.
And then?
And then if they have to have a public hearing. See, that's in, those, those public hearing dates are in code. Yeah. You have to address the chair.
Sure.
I was just following up on something you were saying. With the regulations, when I looked into it, there's the advertising requirement, there has to be a certain amount of advance. However, if a special meeting were to occur as a joint planning, and you could still have a public hearing in front of the special, special meeting, after which the planning commission and town could discuss, and then you could recommend, and subsequently, they could go from there.
It's.
And I think that based on the need of this community, that would be advantageous to do, because there is such a high need. You have people that are, I've, that are just completely lost, that don't know what to do. So, I mean, but this has been a problem for years. And we have families that just keep leaving and try to come back, because they don't have another option there. And I'm, I really am just trying to help. I.
So, so Steve, is that an accurate interpretation of the process?
Again, the council has received the request. I, I can't let you know until I hear from them whether they wish to have the joint meeting.
Okay, but I was just wondering if that was truly the process, what she described? If that was a viable option, that process that, that she described?
A joint meeting could be scheduled, yes.
Where, where both could vote, recommend and vote at the same meeting?
With one, with a, I think what she's trying to ask is, is it allowed under the code to have a joint public hearing?
It is possible, yes.
Okay. I was sitting here thinking, if we ever did that with the schools, and I don't ever remember a joint public hearing.
It is very rare.
Yeah. I, I didn't remember a joint public hearing, but we had all kinds of joint meetings.
You can have joint meetings. If there's no action at the meetings, it's, it's much more common to have.
We had, we had action. And in Spotsy, in Spotsylvania, we had joint meetings with the governing body, and there was action. I just couldn't recall a joint public hearing in my brain.
Maybe, maybe I'm a stickler for the process, but I, I kind of like to see the planning commission have our meeting and have our public hearing, and make a recommendation to the council, as we usually do. But that's, that's just me.
You're the chairman.
Ms. Smith, have you?
Well, apparently, it's up to the council whether we do or not, so.
It is.
Chairman, could I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Ms. Smith, have you completed your certification process? I think at the last time, you used.
Yeah. I had everything submitted, even the special use permit. The state had to withdraw their application, because they cannot allow me to operate as a licensed facility without a special use permit. Therefore, she has said, until I get that, I cannot, I can start the reapplication process. So, and she has 60 days to approve. When it comes down, I know that there's a process, there's a timeline. You guys have already reviewed everything and recommended it once before. Nothing has changed. You just have additional information. So I don't see why the process cannot be elevated to, you already have reviewed it, you already approved it. And if moving it forward is not changing anything for your process, because again, you already reviewed everything and approved it, I don't see why it would be going outside of what you do traditionally to do a joint meeting, because I think it still falls in with your curfew, it still falls in with what you're traditionally comfortable in the process you usually follow.
Okay, other questions or discussion at this time? The next item is also for discussion, and this concerns a look at the short-term rentals. We have the information that we've had before about the number of short-term rentals, whether they're hotels, bed and breakfast, or lodging houses. We have them listed by property and showing what zoning district they're located in. And we also have a letter to consider for a public meeting, which would be at our October 11th meeting, to invite short-term rental owners, local realtors, to come in and discuss these questions. And this is just a draft of that letter. If there's other items that the commission would want input on, and then hopefully, what I was hoping the commission would be able to do would be to provide a handful, if each of you would want to come up with a realtor and short-term rental, so that we keep it fairly compact.
Yeah, I was going to ask where you plan on having this meeting.
Yeah, so I, my hope would be able to just be a handful of, invite a handful of realtors, a handful of short-term rental owners to provide a response, so if you all have.
Yeah, so they're not necessarily going to be here in person, according to the letter. They could respond in writing, right?
That is correct, yes.
Now, the, the date of September 29th, you know, like, that's only, by the time you get our input as to who, you know, and with the mail system being what it is, is that giving them enough time to respond? If today is 13th?
If you all want, again, this was just trying to meet the October 11th. That's.
Well, and that Monday's a holiday, too, so.
So if, if you want, we can push this back to November. There is no immediate rush on, on the commission's update of this, so again, this is just a draft letter. If, if you all think that we need to give more time, absolutely, we can definitely do that.
I'll be unable to be here. I'll be in Blacksburg on that day, on the 29th.
Oh, no, that's just.
Oh, no, that's when.
That's the same. We dare ask for a response back by then.
That's just the RSVP date.
RSVP date for the meeting on October 11th.
Well, if there's no hurry in it, then why couldn't we do it at the November meeting instead?
Absolutely.
And that way, it gives, if, if you're looking for input from us as to, to whom to send the, the letter.
Is the council asking for this meeting or?
No, no, like.
Oh, that's right, you weren't here.
The council, the council's asking, we, we asked for it to get input from people. Because the council asked us to evaluate the.
Appropriate locations.
Yeah, the locations of the short-term rentals.
I mean, I really don't see a problem at this point. And I wonder if this bringing on a problem. You know, we, this is a, I'll just make a quick statement if I can. You know, we're a tourism town and we're one of the most popular ones in Virginia. We probably have less lodging than any other tourism town in the state. And this is probably bringing more people into town that probably may not be able to come. It's increasing the tax base. We've had no problems. The police say they've had no problems. And maybe some will come if it continues, but that's just my take on it, situation.
Well, I think, and I don't, I don't know what discussions the council had before they decided to give it to us to evaluate. But I think there is perception among a lot of people, at least I've heard discussion, that, there are citizens who believe that the influx of short, that, you know, the increasing number of short-term rentals has had a negative impact on our inventory of rental places for people.
Long-term rent.
Long-term rentals, because they're all, I think the perception is, at least, that there are so many short-term rentals that it's taking up all of the rental property that could be used for people who live here and work here. And I don't, I don't know if that's why the council gave it to us to evaluate or not. But what we discussed the, at our last meeting, when we asked Steve if he could set up the meeting, is that I, I don't know if I feel knowledgeable enough about short-term rentals in Luray, Virginia, to be able to evaluate what the town has without getting more information. And so having input from realtors and people who own short-term rentals, I thought would be helpful to us, to evaluate. Not necessarily saying that there's a problem or not a problem, and if there's not a problem, it would be nice to be able to say, we've reviewed all of this, this is what we've had input on, and we don't see a problem. But I, I don't feel, I just don't feel like I'm up to speed enough to be able to evaluate something if I don't have the information I need.
But I think it would be nice to hear from the actual owners that are renting the property, to give them an opportunity. It's all we're doing, I think, is giving them an opportunity to speak. Have them come in and say, spend two minutes saying, hey, this year I've noticed a big difference from, you know, my place is open fifty percent of the time. Last year it was open ten percent of the time. I don't know, just to get people's, um, reactions to how things are going on this, on this subject. Because like, like you, Barbie, I don't feel like I know enough about the situation. We have several, um, special use permits come in too, it's almost every month. And I'm not saying enough's enough by any stretch of imagination. I'm saying, when do we start evaluating that? Let's see where people's feelings are now that are involved directly in the industry. We're sitting here making decisions, not really knowing unless you're out talking to each of these people or to the realtors on what the situation's like.
Yeah, and when, a couple of meetings ago, when Councilman White was here and talking about it, and, and I think we, we shared at that time that we really didn't feel like that, that it was an issue yet at, at this moment, but it's certainly something that needs to be discussed, you know? And that we need to keep it on the forefront. But I think, and, and we discussed then, and I think it comes up every time, I think what it's, what's in people's mind is the fact that we've had more this year than we've had cumulatively for the past five years. Yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean we're inundated with short-term rentals.
Right, right.
There's a total of thirty-three, thirty-three lodging houses.
Yeah, and that includes the, the hotel, hotels that we have.
That's, that's leaving out the hotels and the.
Um, oh, I thought it, I thought it had the.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine with the hotels.
Forty-nine short-term rentals, seven hotels, nine.
Yeah, 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 okay. Just going off the memory and I should.
Thirty-three.
But I, I would agree that the perception is that we've had an increase, but if you look at it, five or six, I, I can't, I don't know the number off the top. I have, have been out at the Luray Landing, you know, the town homes that have been newly created. So there is a perception, I, and I, I think the intent of, 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 of the letter was to try and get some folks who, who should be experts in, in, you know, sales and, and whatnot, to get their input as to, you know, is there still, how's the housing market going? Is there?
What are their investors telling them? You know, are they looking for short-term rental properties in, near the river, out in the county? Are they now looking for short-term rentals in the town? Because if they're saying, what their investors are telling them is that they are, you know, they're not really looking for downtown properties. They're looking for more rural, you know, out in the country, then we could probably say that that's a forecast that maybe we're not going to have as many as we've had. Or the inverse could be true. Maybe they have investors that are saying, yeah, we've saturated the cabins and now we want downtown, we want.
Convenience of walking.
Walking to the movie theater and to shopping and to restaurants and.
Well, I, 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 and I do suspect that part of the marketing of the Luray Landing townhomes is to Northern Virginia as a second home slash short-term rental. So I, I, you know, we received another block of eight townhomes that are going in on Caterpillar, the, the other street that's been undeveloped out there. So, um, we will probably, within the next two years, have almost full construction of the two hundred, two hundred and sixty, two hundred and fifty townhome units. So most likely, if they're continuing to market to Northern Virginia, we'll probably see another ten percent of the. So we, we could see another ten, fifteen short-term applications come in for there. But the, the number of existing homes that are being renovated has slowed in, at least that, that I'm aware of.
Right, so I think, you know, when you're talking about perceptions of the inventory, like we've discussed before too, those, those homes that are being built, the townhomes, are being built to, to be sold. They're not being built for the developer to rent. So anybody in Luray or Page County that wants to buy a home has just as much opportunity to buy that home as anybody from Northern Virginia. So those are not the homes that I think are the rub for our folks. I think it's the ones that are, have always been single-family homes in town, on streets that are neighborhoods, that have always been neighborhoods, that now are not rentals and not, they're short-term rentals. And those, and I don't know how many of the thirty-three are in that category without, you know, looking through all the addresses and plotting them out on the map for me. That's what it would take for me to, to see that.
Having been involved with at least the last three to four homes, single-family homes that were submitted for short-term rentals, those were homes that had been unoccupied for a significant period, that just simply weren't on the market. But an investor saw them as an opportunity.
Right.
So.
Oh, yeah, and the plus side, the plus side is, is that the more places we have for lodging for, for tourists, as Johnny said, the more people come, the more people shop on Main Street, the more people, I guess, that's all good. And the other good thing is that properties that maybe haven't been taken care of as much now are being spiffed up because they are going to use them as short, those are all positives. But there are, there are perceived negatives too. And if there are more positives than negatives, then I, I think a discussion about them is helpful so that everybody can have some perspective about what we're talking about. Instead of leaving it to people's imaginations to fill in the blanks.
And, and, and that's where I, I would agree. And I, I suspect that what you'll hear from most of the folks is that the actual number of available rental homes really had, hadn't changed as far as the short-term.
No, but the prices have dramatically changed of the ones that we have.
And I don't know that that's necessarily associated with the short-term rental. I think that.
Right, but I think that's driving the perception.
You're, 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 I would agree with that statement.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if, I'm, who knows what that's a function of? But I think the perception is that it is a function of short-term rentals.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah, what, what happened at that meeting?
Yeah, yeah, if you read, if you read the minutes, none of that was in there, was it, John? It was like, you know, a couple of sentences in there.
Yeah, I just.
And then, and then on the other side, as, as consumer, like Ryan said, it's nice to have a property that, if you do it through Airbnb or whoever, and if it's close where you can walk, you know? Just speaking for, for Linda and myself, we love those places. Park the car, walk to shopping. Walk out to the beach or, you know, wherever it is, um, it's wonderful.
Yeah, I'm going to one tomorrow. I'm using one tomorrow.
In town?
Not in town. In another town.
Wanted to try it firsthand.
Yeah, so I've done it twice in my life and both have been in, in a town. I've not done any cabins or anything like that, but yeah, I've done them. It's, it is convenient and I, that, if I'm gonna do that, um, I prefer that. The first time we used one, um, there were no hotels in the place that we went, like there weren't any hotels.
And, and even if it's just to get out and walk, uh, besides walking to the restaurants or the shops or, uh, some venue, uh, just to get out and walk on a, a town street.
So I don't, you know, and I don't think the towns, the town, when they, when they asked us to review, it didn't sound like to me like their discussion was centered around, should we have them, should we not have them? It was more of a fact of, if we're gonna have them, are we sure we know where we want to have them?
And I. Or at least to be more educated on it to be, or more aware of it so that we know a little bit more of when, when, when we might be approaching that, okay, this is probably too many or, or something along those lines.
Yeah, I'm still a little fuzzy about what the criteria is for how we know if we think it's too many. I, I think, I think anytime we can get input, that helps us. I think it, I think that's a good thing. I know it takes, I know it takes time.
Well, and, and again, I, I appreciate pushing it back to the November for the, their input. And then, so if, if anyone has any other additional questions or suggestions or changes to the order, please let me know. And then if you could let the chairman know your suggestions for, um, you know, a realtor or two and a, a short-term rental owner or two, then we can have that ready for, for y'all to confirm and then we can get those letters out and start getting some info.
November fifteenth? Looks like our, our November meeting would be November fifteenth.
I'm in Shreveport that day.
Are you staying in an Airbnb?
Stay at your facilities and that.
You'll have to talk to Linda when she comes, or when you come back, because that's where she was born.
Really?
I didn't know that.
Yeah, the National Tour Association Annual Meetings.
Where, where is this one?
Shreveport, Louisiana.
Staying on a paddle boat?
Okay, any other, any other discussion on this item?
I think the letter looks good. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, other commission comments? Any other items, Steve, that we need to be brought, be brought up today, Don?
No, sir. Um, like I said, we just got a request for a zoning permit for eight of the townhomes out at Luray Landing. Uh, we have issued a business license for the Bistro Steakhouse. So that will hopefully be opening before the end of the year. We've not heard a, a firm date, but we did, we, like everyone saw.
I heard two weeks.
Really? I, I know that they were advertising for help, so.
I heard two weeks.
That would be wonderful. Um, so.
I hope, I hope that's true.
So, yeah.
The oning is up and it's got, you know, got their name on it and everything.
They've been, they've, every, every other day I see another delivery gate also. So, yeah, that'll be another good addition to, to downtown.
We need three more restaurants.
Across the street. And hopefully the Quality Inn will be open again soon.
I've heard the end of the year. It'll be closed the rest of the year.
And the same with the Dollar Tree, hopefully. Dollar Tree.
Yeah, they've been getting, they've been getting deliveries. They've had pallets delivered.
I'd heard the end of September for the Dollar Tree, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's soon.
Hopefully those existing businesses will be back in business and these, these new ones will be too, soon. Anything else to bring up? Okay, if not, then I think we've already said that our October meeting is October the eleventh. Should be having some changing of leaf, colors of leaves.
So you were still, the town council meeting will still be on the ninth, even though it's a holiday?
Might be on the tenth.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I think we did have this discussion before, didn't we?
Historically, I think it gets moved back to the Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
If it, if it's anything different, I will let you know, because if they move it to the next Monday, then that would adjust our meeting. But historically, I think we have just moved it to the Tuesday.
Okay, if nothing else, then we have completed this agenda and we will be adjourned.